We'll call me in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan, here.
Green.
Yes.
Ms. Stravich, Reindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Motion to excuse Counselor Mr. Avich for being not at town would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
They're made and supported. Is there any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes. We need a motion for the City Council meeting minutes of June 7th.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the special meeting minutes of Thursday, June 10th. Is there a motion for those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
That's been made and supported. Any discussion on those minutes? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on. Audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the City Council now would be the time. They ask that you go to the podium and state your name and address. Are you here for an agenda item?
For an agenda item?
Yes.
No.
Did you want to speak to the City Council?
This happens every two weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay, they do well.
Okay, just step up to podium and state your name.
Constance Jones. I'm concerned with the city ordinance regarding feral cats. And I'd like to have that changed.
Like to have it changed?
Yes.
Okay, and what do you see wrong with it at this point?
I was told that their residents would be, can be fined and even jailed for feeding feral cats. And it doesn't seem that the city has a good resolution for the feral cat population, overpopulation. And, well, that's about it at this point.
Okay, we've, the city manager has notified the City Council. There's been quite a bit of writing in, what do you call it?
Facebook.
Social media. Quite a few airs also by a misinformed public. But as that thread went on, it looked like people were starting to talk about the possibility of rescues, trapping, neutering, and putting them back, which is probably the most humane thing that you can do for those animals.
Mm-hmm.
I think we haven't had a chance as a council to talk about it.
Just.
But I think we'd be more than happy to work with whoever it is that would like to spearhead that. And all they need to do is meet with the city manager. But there, it is true, it's a misdemeanor if it's carried on and on and on. That's all it was. The city is not out to, some people said, kill the cats and whatnot. That's not the type of people we are. We're not any different than anybody else here. You know, we feel bad for those feral cats. But something does have to be done. It was based on complaints, multiple complaints the city manager received. That's why we had to proceed forward. People were actually, had houses and feeding the cats. And that just perpetuates the misery that quite often feral cats go through.
I don't think feeding them perpetuates the misery. It's the, the lack of neutering in Spain, not use of the TNR programs.
Uh-huh.
I think there needs to be community education.
I agree with you on that point. The point is, nobody was doing anything with the program. So to perpetuate the feral cat by feeding them, you're perpetuating. They're healthy, they can breed. And I'm sure you probably know, you sound like you know what you're, that you've looked into this or been involved in this before. The healthier they are, the more kittens they have. The more kittens they have, the more feral cats we have. The less food we have, the more misery they go through. So I'm an old Humane Society investigator, so I think I know quite a bit about it. And it's sad to see it happening, but feeding it is not the, feeding the colonies is not the answer, as you said, is trapping, neutering, and putting them back out.
And then once they're put back out, then residents are not allowed to feed them?
No.
See, I think that needs to change.
You hear a lot of people on private property, but not on city right of way.
I think the ordinance regarding feeding feral cats needs, needs to change. Yes, people need to trap and have the cats spayed or neutered, and then released into the community. But fining or jailing a resident for feeding a feral cat, I don't think that is right.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll listen to your opinion. If you, I think if you have further, which sounds like you do, if you have further concerns, contact the city manager.
I'd be happy to meet with anyone.
That's how it works.
What is your name?
John Warren. I can give you my card after the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. I've left my name and number with everyone that I've contacted, and no one's contacted me. So I'd be happy to sit down and meet with them and try to work out a solution.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
As the mayor said, it's never our intent to try and jail residents.
No. That's worst-case scenario. If somebody wasn't complying with the ordinance, it's like any of our, many of our other ordinances, it leads to that eventually. And rarely do we have to go there, in any instance. Rarely. Usually we get, they comply, one way or the other, whatever it may be. So, now, that's, that's not the people we are here. Okay, we move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager. Any changes?
I have no changes.
City Council, any changes?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration. We have three this evening. The first one being consideration of a special event request, Starcraft Brewery Second Anniversary Event. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving a special event request from Starcraft Brewery for their second anniversary celebration. The owners from Starcraft Brewery would like to again close the portion of Water Street from the Forest to the Alley Drive approach at the back of their building. And also the Forest Street sidewalk and the tree lawn area that runs in front of their two buildings. This is similar to what they did last year, along with setting up a tent in between the two buildings. The biggest change from last year, last year was a one-day event. This year, they're looking to do it Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So it would be, I believe, Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 11, well, Friday and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then on Sunday from 12:00 p.m. to 9:30. The other change, I think Friday and Saturday, they'd have live music. And then they would also have, instead of the one food truck, they would have one food truck on Friday, two food trucks on Saturday, and one food truck on Sunday. And all of their information is in the council packet. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve special event request from Starcraft Brewery for a second anniversary celebration on Friday, July 16, 2021, through Sunday, July 18, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, and 12:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on Sunday, including a tent and outdoor music. The approval is contingent upon the following. Number one, permission to close a portion of Water Street from Forest to the Alleyway Drive, and a portion of the Forest Street sidewalk and tree lawn area in front of their buildings, from Wednesday, July 14 through Tuesday, July 20, to allow time to set up the fence and a tent. And secondly, permission to have up to three mobile food vendors in accordance with their special event application for mobile food vendors.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Of course, I'm going to have discussion. Food trucks. Now, we're going to go three days with food trucks in town. When restaurants are open, right in the backyard, and the other ones within 300 feet. Where does it stop, I guess? One of the other things is, is as it's written in the administration's recommendation, second sentence, we're also recommending up to three mobile food vendors if, if local food establishments are reached out to first. I'd feel a lot better if that was part of a motion with this. Matter of fact, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to amend the main motion to add if local food establishments are reached out to first as recommended by administration. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been second. Okay, discussion on the amendment? Okay. Is there any audience participation on this item?
I agree with you.
Pardon me?
I agree with you. The local establishment needs.
Thank you. Thank you. You got to use the podium. But we'll let it go. You're the only one here. Okay, if there's no discussion, all in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Now, we go to the main motion. Any other discussion on that?
I guess I would just say, to speak of the specific food trucks that are, they are getting are not, the food type is not really available in the city. So it's.
I agree with you, Jamie. I agree with you 100%.
So they are, they are reaching out to choose other options, like that aren't, so to speak, competing, even though I, you know, and I, we disagree on food trucks don't.
Yeah, we're going to disagree. The competition is a concern that I have.
Yes, the competition is, well, right, but it's, it's, also, I guess, the thing with the food trucks is, this is a thing in society nationwide, maybe worldwide right now, where you have these pubs that just serve beer, and it's like, it is like the it place to go. And then while you're drinking, you go out, you get your taco, and you come back in, and you, you do your thing. So.
Completely understand. I don't think it's right in our community. That's why we disagree. I'm not going to beliger the, you know, the conversation. We've already had it. But I, I don't, I just don't see, it's unfair competition. And that's what I originally said. Said, it's unfair competition.
Yes, it is, it is an event, though. This is a very special event, just like Good Old Days is a special event, and has really food trucks, too.
Over in the park.
It's two blocks down.
Well, it's more than that, but anyhow, it's not that close to any restaurant that's open at that time. Plus, our restaurants are pretty well-packed all Good Old Days weekend. So we have almost 60,000 to 100,000 people on the weekend that come into town. That's not happening here. There's a lot of differences between Good Old Days. There's no comparison whatsoever, as far as I'm concerned. Otherwise, I wouldn't be doing it for the last 38 years. My opinion.
Yes.
My opinion. And we're all, you know, we can all have an opinion on this. And I understand your comment about it's, you know, nationwide. That's great. There's a lot of things that are happening in our country that I hope to God never happens in Richmond. This is one of them that I don't appreciate. So, but that's my opinion. The council's very aware of that. And again, I do not want his, I love the idea of what he's doing. And if it was in another town, I'd probably applaud it, where there's a whole lot more people. But we're only a town of 6,000 and a community of about 24,000. I don't know how many people. I've been to his first anniversary, and I, I enjoyed myself. I didn't eat there, but I enjoyed myself. I think those type of things is what we need to promote more in our community. And I hope that my one vote on this council is going to make a difference on whether people go and enjoy themselves there or not. I hope they do go there. But I personally cannot vote for this. The Chamber of Commerce spoke to it. I am constantly reminded by the restaurants in town about it. And they are not in favor of food trucks whatsoever. And that's where I'm coming from, is business-wise. It's just, it's unfair business in our community. It's just like if, these mobile places that go around town, I don't, I don't think it's fair. And it's not just food trucks. It's any of these mobile things that come into our community, provide a service that they can go uptown and, and get without any problem. But those people come into town, they grab, you know, that money and leave. And I just, I think that's, that's wrong. So anyhow, I don't, I don't, it's not just food trucks for me. It's any, any type of mobile business that we already have in our community that I'm against. So I hope they have a great event. I really do. And I'm sure I will be there, as you all know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, just for a little clarification, I'm totally fine with your amended motion. I'm totally fine with that, with them going to the local businesses. But if the local businesses choose not to participate, they are able to reach out on their own for food vendors, up to three food vendors?
Yeah. One of the problems, oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This, I would, the motion that I had is, has nothing to do with the, the food truck people. This is, I hope he reaches out to them, gives them the opportunity. That doesn't mean that you can't have a food truck. I hope that wasn't taken wrong.
And I apologize. I just want to make sure I understand what I'm being asked to do.
Uh-huh.
I'm going to tell Starcraft Brewery that they need to reach out to the local first before they can have food truck, or is it?
That's not what it says. It just says that they need.
And I don't have a copy of it, so I was, I was trying to listen and not doing a very good job, apparently.
Well, it says right here, we are also recommending up to three mobile food vendors in that local food establishments are reached out to first. Doesn't say that they can't have, you recommend that they have three mobile.
I didn't write this, so.
Oh, okay.
If you can, up here, N.C. means Nicole Clark.
Means what?
Nicole Clark.
Oh.
Like if you see one that says KMS, it means Karen Stagel.
Okay.
I'm trying to delegate more as council's directing me to. But, and so, she used mine from last year, but I, again, so what paragraph is that?
It says, we are also, this is under administration recommendation.
Yep.
We are also recommending up to three mobile food vendors if local food establishments are reached out to first. So I took that, that you just got to reach out to them first, but you don't, it doesn't negate the food vendors, because your, your sentence says, we are recommending up to three food vendors. So all they got to do is go out and ask food vendor, or locals if they want to participate.
Okay.
Yeah, they can still have.
They may have already.
The food, or the food trucks.
They can still have that, as far as.
That's the way I took the recommendation.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
How I was going about it.
You got it in front of you there, right?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, okay.
In the background, briefly also, the invitation will be extended to all businesses in downtown area.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Set up.
Yeah.
I think they do have their antennas to do that, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's part of the motion.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, that's all. Anything else? We're discussing the, the main motion here. And you said, it wasn't on the map, but you said the tent is going to go in between the buildings?
I believe from my conversation with them, that's where it was last year, and that's where it is this year.
Yeah, okay. Because I see they moved the van back into the parking lot.
Yep.
So the van's going to be outside of the tent.
I, I think they have a fence permit to fence that in.
Yeah.
Whether they get that completed before this event, I think that's their intention. But I know sometimes, you know, contractors and fence companies, if they're not doing it themselves.
They're looking at permanent fence?
Yeah, yeah, they have a, yeah, a lot, I, or, I believe.
They have to fence six feet in height.
Uh-huh.
Replace the chain link that's there.
Okay.
And then they're expanding to the back of the building a little bit.
With the fence?
With the fence in the area to make a bigger outdoor area between the two.
Yep, they need it. It was packed last time.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments on the main motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Nay? Motion does pass. Item number two, consideration of board appointments. Mr. City Manager?
We have board appointments for the Economic Development Corporation, the Library Board, and planning. For EDC, it's Al Menace. For the Library Board, it's Alexander Stewart. And for Planning Commission, it's George Frank and Sean Misco.
Thank you. We'll do EDC first. I would hope that you could confirm my reappointment of Al Menace to the EDC for a six-year term. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Al Menace to the Economic Development Corporation, EDC, for a six-year term with expiration date of June 30, 2027.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? I saw in Al's appointment, did I read that wrong? You know what, I think I did read it wrong, because I think Alex Stewart's was, yeah, I'm sorry. Alex Stewart's was, was like really tight to it. And it said, I was reading the back, and it said, been on for two years. I think Al's been on EDC for a lot longer than, than that. But then I realized that I had Alex Stewart's was kind of stuck to it.
Al's been on probably over 10 years, I think.
Oh, yeah, probably, yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank Al. We also have the Library Board. Is there a motion for the Library Board?
Make the motion to reappoint Alexander Stewart to the Library Board for a two-year term with the expiration date of June 30, 2023.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this? Again, we appreciate Pastor Stewart stepping back up again for two more years. Any, any comments from the public? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Also, we have George Frank. I would ask that the council confirm my appointment of George Frank to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint George Frank. I'm sorry. Make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of George Frank to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with an expiration date of June 30, 2024.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Little typo there.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see that before. Okay, any discussion on, on the reappointment of George Frank to the Planning Commission? We again appreciate George putting his name back in again. Any comments from the public? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I also would ask that you would confirm my reappointment of Sean Misco to the Planning Commission for her term of three years.
Make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Sean Misco to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with the expiration date June 30, 2024.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on the reappointment? Appreciate Sean's, I think he said 10 months now, already?
Yeah.
Yeah, it went by fast. I appreciate him coming on board with us. Brought a, a new look to the Planning Commission also, with his youth and his knowledge. Any comment from the public on this appointment? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank all of them. Item number three is consideration of establishing the quarterly roundtable meeting date. Mr. City Manager?
Council is being asked to schedule the next quarterly roundtable meeting. The roundtable rides are not provided for the City Council to discuss specific areas of concern in detail in workshop format without taking formal action on those matters. The next roundtable would normally be scheduled in July. I just wanted to remind council that the first meeting after, the first meeting in July is July 6, so that's right after the Fourth of July holiday, where it will be closed on Monday. And then my vacation is scheduled for July 9 through the 13th. I would be able to get the packet out for the second meeting in July, though. I just didn't want to have it on that one Monday there while I'm off.
Council want to talk about this, or is there a motion to be made?
Let's probably discuss, see what works best, before we go through a bunch of motions.
Mm-hmm. Make a motion to that effect? 19th?
Oh.
No, I said we should probably discuss some dates before we do make a motion, and it doesn't work, so we don't have to go through a bunch of.
We'll suspend the rules if everybody's in agreement?
Yep.
I'm okay with the 19th.
Yeah, 19.
I'm not going to be here on the 19th.
No?
Is everybody in town on the 6th? Or is it?
I'm not.
Oh, you're not? Okay.
No.
I'm, actually, I start vacation on the 17th, and I'm gone for three weeks.
Nice.
Well deserved.
So that means you won't be there for the August 2nd meeting either.
I'll be back for August 2nd. I'll come back, that's it.
And then John's gone at the, on the 12th?
Yes.
We can do it on an off Monday as well, or another day of the week.
Who's off on the 2nd of August?
I'll be back by then, I'm sure.
I won't be, well, I might, yeah, I don't know. We'll be coming back from Traverse City, but I don't know how early I'll be back.
On the August one?
On the 2nd, yeah.
Okay. So what about midweek? Is there anything that we could do there? John, you're gone 9 through 12, was it?
Correct.
13? 9 through 12?
Yep.
Okay, what about?
Well, I'm gone 9 through 13.
9 through 13, okay. So is there any, the week of the 19th, is there any time that everybody's here?
John said he's going to be back.
I'm gone.
John's, you're gone, gone?
Yes, I'm gone for three weeks, starting the 17th.
Okay.
But if you need, you know, if you want to do it on the 19th, if you could do it on the 19th, I'll just stay home, leave Tuesday morning.
No.
It's not a big deal to me.
No, and I'm wrong. I actually, I, I have to be back on the 2nd. I have to work on the 2nd.
Okay.
So I'm leaving that Sunday, so I can do, I can do the 2nd.
Okay, are we good to the 2nd?
But that works for everybody else.
August 2nd works for me, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not going anywhere.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to schedule the quarterly roundtable meeting of the City Council, August 2nd, 2021, at City Hall, beginning at, well, our meetings start early, so.
No, no, they start at 7:00. We're good.
We're good, all right, you're right, we changed. Yeah, 5:30?
30 p.m.
I was reading it.
Is there a second?
Motion, yes, support.
Support?
Yep.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? I think that was good for Mike, also?
Yes, he was good on any Monday. I mean, he didn't get that far into August, but he was good on any Mondays. He indicated.
At 5:30, correct?
Yep.
Uh, yes, at 5:30. All right. All right, we got a motion and support. Any further discussion on August 2nd at 5:30? Any public comment on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on. We move on to miscellaneous matters from the City Manager, sir.
Just a reminder, last year, we did change our fireworks ordinance and went with the state holidays, where specific days around certain holidays are allowed for fireworks for, in June and July, that limits it from Tuesday, June 29th, through Sunday, July 4th, from 11:00 in the morning to 11:45 at night. That's when fireworks are legal within the, consumer-grade fireworks are legal within the city of Richmond. Again, Tuesday, June 29th, through Sunday, July 4th. And then, we believe we have a tentative date for the resolution for the softball players, which will be that first meeting in July, which is Tuesday, July 6th.
Okay, moving on, council comments? Yep.
I'd like to put a big cheer up for our athletes in this town, our softball girls taking the state champ, the boys' baseball, coming in second, that's the fastest I believe that Richmond's ever gone in the baseball high school. Our trap team is doing well, and I know, and I'm asking, so now when you look at the state of Michigan, you see Richmond, it's not just a little hick town anymore, it's, it's a town to think about when, when they, they meet us, so I'm very proud of it.
Very proud. You had a granddaughter on the championship softball team, too, this year, so.
Yes, I did.
Very nice. Okay, Rob?
Nothing to add to that?
Nothing to add.
Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing to add.
Back to me, I've got things that people want us to talk about. The Heritage Festival is this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, from 10:00 to 4:00, at the Historic Village on Park Street, referred to as REGS, Richmond Area Historical and Genealogical Society. There should be a number of vehicles this year, over there, Model As and Model Ts, tractors and whatnot, it sounds like it's going to be very, very good. There'd be a children's petting, petting farm, games, demonstrations for the kids, horse-drawn wagons, quite a few things going on for the Heritage Festival, and that's this weekend, June 26th and 27th. The summer youth volleyball camp is going to be going on. Matter of fact, one session started today, there'll be another session August 2nd. This will be held at BB Street Park, the time for that camp is 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. You can call our rec department at 727-3064 to find out more about how to sign up for that. The BB Street Park Pavilion just held the ventriloquist, music and fun, this past Thursday. The next time will be Thursday, July 22nd, when they'll have Mr. C in the Shoestring Band at 11:00 a.m. in the Pavilion in BB Park. The Police Officers Association will be still hosting their cookout, I believe that's on August 1st, it doesn't say on this particular document, but they are asking for anybody that would like to buy a chance on a golf cart, that the drawing will be held at that pig roast on August 1st, and tickets are available at the Richmond Police Department, or you can contact either Dana McLean or Julia France at 727-4000 for arrangements to get ahold of the golf cart raffle. And that is all I have for that. Our calendar, we are looking at Tiffa Meeting this Wednesday night at 7:00 o'clock here at City Hall. That's going to take us into July, and the library will be closed on Saturday, the 3rd, in observance of Independence Day. The City Council will be meeting next on July 6th. It also says here that City Hall, Library, and Community Center will be closed on the 5th also. So the City Hall, Library, and Community Center will be closed on July 5th for the day, again, in celebration of Independence Day. City Council will meet at 7:00, well, now at 5, I'm sorry, I'm getting screwed up here. Will meet at 7:00 for the next regular City Council meeting. I don't believe there's anything else to add to the calendar at the moment. Again, congratulations to all the teams that have done so well, as Counselor Schultz brought up, and I believe that is it. Is there any other business to the City Council this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support. Motion made and supported, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.